Briefing agenda, the time is one o'clock. We have today two items in executive services, one item under business services, two items under operations. I would please ask that we allow the presenters to go ahead and do the presentation and then I will call upon you to ask any questions that you may have. I'm going to keep it to our three minute time so that way we can get through everything and be sure to be able to make it to our three o'clock action meeting. And if the presenters would, when they come up, if they could please state who they are because it's hard to see who everybody is and where they're located. So if you don't mind, I'm going to give some time to Ms. Fisher or Chair, she had something to share. Mary, unmute yourself.
Okay. You're on mute. You're good. Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you just for a few minutes of time for me to officially welcome for the first official briefing and board meeting, our new board attorney, Kathy Dupree Bruno. We had a lot of help from her yesterday at the workshop and we look forward to a long tenure with our brand new parliamentarian and board attorney. So welcome Kathy and thank you for being with us.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving along, we are going to go right to executive services and it's, the subject is student code of conduct and if the presenters would please, hi Ms. Duncan, how are you? If you would please state your name and who else will be there speaking with you. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, I'm Jessica Duncan, Executive Director for Student Services. I am here with a couple of people from our team. Up after me will be Chuck Bradley and he will introduce the person who is speaking after him. Just wanted to share some updates on our code of conduct. This has been a really collaborative process. So we've involved student advisory, Spalk, Talc, principal leads. We've offered opportunities for all admin to give input. We have presented at community forums. We've gotten input from district attorneys, students at Success Academy. We've presented at Eback. So we've had the opportunity to get a lot of great input and to use that as we made some changes. We have made changes that we know will increase readability and also make things easier to find in the code of conduct where before they might have been interspersed. Now you'll hear a little bit later how that's actually going to be laid out. We also made changes from a restorative lens. So while the code still has consequences for inappropriate behavior, we've included some sections with strategies to support desired behavior and we think that those are maybe some really positive additions for all of our stakeholders. The first page of the code of conduct will now be directions for parents to create their focus account. So if they don't already have that, that's another way that they'll be able to access that information and that way they can access attendance, grades and important information about their students. Another update was for Title IX. So I'm going to ask Chuck Bradley to come and share those updates with you now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. It's good to see you all. We did add some updates for Title IX and it's based on the draft of the non-discrimination policy, which is also coming to you for adoption. It also expands within the section on Title IX, information to students. We put in a section called Nine for Nine and it's nine pieces of information that students need to know about Title IX. We've also added in the back section, a section on LGBTQ and the rights that LGBTQ students have in our schools. And with that, I'm going to introduce Mr. Brian Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley, appreciate that. Part of the reorganization consists of the first section after the introduction called Students' Rights and Responsibilities or Rights and Responsibilities. This is something that the students commented upon favorably, whether it was at the Student Advisory Committee meeting or the Success Account and Briefing or at community forums. Students really like this, be able to read the code of conduct and especially appreciate things like the charts, flow charts, graphics and things that make the comprehension and digestion of the code of conduct easier on them. So we took the existing student rights and broke it apart from responsibilities and we focused on those students' rights to learn, knowledge of code of conduct and to the right to respect and be respected. Under responsibilities, the focus is on being ready, reliable, respectful and being a role model. I believe the PowerPoint is coming up now with it. The section underneath the rights and responsibilities is something new for our code of conduct. It's the model student behavior. It has been crosswalked with our discipline matrix, that's why it's into three different tiers. What it does, it gives students those exemplar behaviors that we wish all students display on a regular basis and those behaviors in which we'd like them to avoid, which then leads into our next section, which is interventions and corrective actions. And to talk about that, Sir Interventions Coordinator, Mrs. Scott.
All right, good afternoon. So our new section is very exciting to me for interventions and corrective actions. We want to be able to promote the work that all of our schools are currently doing and also to enhance our transparency in regards to interventions and corrective actions. You will notice that positive behavior supports have been updated and an emphasis on the social emotional learning piece as well. This comes in the way of feedback from our community stakeholders. You will notice that there are 50 interventions listed in the multi-tiered system of support. So we have recognized 20 Tier One supports, 20 Tier Two supports and 10 Tier Three supports. And that is really to give our teachers another resource. It is not, teachers are not required to use all of those supports as those are very individualized by student need, but we want to be able to offer our parents an idea of the types of supports that can be offered to any student and I'm sure that many of them would appreciate it now at this time while they are working with their own children at home. This again serves as a resource. We want to also emphasize our positive behavior supports in all of our schools and our universal supports are the best practices that we know work for our students in Tier One and Tier Two as well. They mitigate our Level One and Level Two behaviors, so that will help. And next is our ESE Director, Teresa.
Good afternoon. This year, the procedures for discipline that involve students with disabilities was an addition to the code and that includes both procedures for manifestation determination review and 45-day interim alternative educational setting placements. Just an important note for you is that none of these procedures are new. They are the same procedures that we have been following and no new laws or anything regarding these areas have been put into place. So there really are no changes here. It's just an addition so that our students and parents are aware of those procedures. And Brian Mangan is back up next.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Continuing on with this slide, the next piece that is added to our code of conduct is under corrective actions in the discipline portion of the reorganized code of conduct. And what I just want to point out here is those restorative practices that have been added are things like mediation, circles, restitution, work details, those type of things that are yet another opportunity for students to restore their relationships with the school or individuals and maintain themselves in the on-campus throughout the course of the school day. Moving over to our disciplinary metrics, this is very common and it's our approach. However, there has been some updates. To start it off with the school environmental incident reporting section of the codes, the first one you see there is ALC, which stands for alcohol. That and then the second one, DRU, which is drug use possession, had been updated to align with the Cessar definition from the state of Florida. The OMC, which stands for other major classified, has been updated to include things such as gambling and paraphernalia as defined by the state. We've had it elsewhere in the past, but now it's all underneath OMC. The next thing is STL or stealing or larceny. The change there is the state has raised it from a $300 threshold to a $750 threshold. That impacts not only this infraction, but also the petty theft, which I'll talk about in just a section. The next one is XH, which is sexual harassment. Again, that was updated to align with what the code of conduct, excuse me, the Cessar definition is. The last one is TOB or tobacco and that has been updated in a couple of different ways. First, the age limit is raised from 18 to 21. That's aligned with the Senate Bill 810, which has passed both the House and Senate at this time and it also reflects the federal law, which requires vendors only to sell to people who are 21 or older. In addition to our tobacco changes there, we have also updated the nicotine prevention course, which replaces the old tobacco cessation course. This is an in-house development by our intervention services as part of student services. Under our local codes, we've had updates to our dress code violation with an emphasis on trying to maintain students in school. Electronic Device, ETD, which is, has an addition in regards to students who use their electronic devices and social media to display weapons. The next portion, FAL, stands for false accusation. The addition there is the inclusion of Fortify Florida as a vehicle for people to use as a false accusation. NSD, which stands for no-show discipline, is returning to our code of conduct. Part of it is a request from our administrative feedback and also looking at the information that we're getting from what's being put input to the mainframe system. PAR stands for drug paraphernalia. That has been removed because that now falls up underneath OMC, other major classified. The next thing is the PTF. What we did here was for petty theft, we did it along the lines of dollar value. Zero to 100 would be a level one offense. 100 to 500 or repeated instance of a level of first infraction would be a level two offense. And for the secondary code of conduct, 500 to 750 would be a level two offense with the possibility of a Success Academy Review Committee appointment. The last change I want to point out is OTH, which is other. It's an extensive list of disparate items that fall underneath there. We have removed the gambling and placed it underneath OMC, other major classified and that's the impact there. The last section under discipline is called Consequences Responses. This is new for our code of conduct, but what it is, is a quick reference guide for schools or anybody else to take a look at it, to know what type of level of offense it is, where it falls under the tier system and the guidance that we provide our schools for contacting law enforcement and the district in regards to specific offenses. At this time, I'm going to be turning it over to Mrs. Shelley Taylor, our graduation coordinator, for essential information.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. So I'm Shelley Taylor, Coordinator for Graduation and we're just going to talk about essential information. So although this is a new section, the majority of the information that you're going to find here is not new, with the exception of a few things that we added. We did add information on the loss of driving privilege under the attendance piece. We did add the bullying and harassment from Board Policy 4.14. We added the Equity Florida, which is really, it's a full-page poster that Mr. Bradley was talking about prior to, in the presentation. We did add the standard diploma graduation requirements straight from the Florida Department of Education and then also the mental health instruction that is now required and Fortify Florida. I am going to turn it back over to our Executive Director for closing comments.
Thank you.
So thank you. Just wanted to have each part of the team come and share some of their piece because they put in so many hours of work on this code of conduct. You, if you have both copies, you can see that the copy with changes is considerably changed and then you should also have the clean copy to help you look through and see some of those changes in the edited form. So I just wanted to thank all the team members and also for input from all of the community, students, parents and everybody involved. So at this point, I'd like to open it for any questions on this section before we move to the adult code of conduct.
Okay. Let me see if we have any questions. I would like to say thank you very much because I seen where they were at Success Academy and with the student advisory and just getting the input from the kids, I think was really important. So thank you for doing all that work. And let me see, I think Ms. Fisher, please.
I have a question, do you want to get to me?
Are you, did you raise your, okay.
I think that was Ms. Gittens because I think she's on the phone. Hi, everyone. Hi, Jessica. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Ever since 2011, the code of conduct has been near and dear to my heart. And so I just wanted to talk about, a little bit about the increase in restorative practices and the positive behavior interventions and supports that are listed in the code of conduct. I think that that's a real advantage to us in approaching kids in a positive way and modeling appropriate behavior and giving them incentives to do so. I did see that in the secondary code of conduct that out-of-school suspension is still a choice for level two offenses. Can we embellish on that a little bit more because I thought we were trying to avoid out-of-school suspensions?
So we are working to avoid them. So it is on a list of different things that you can choose and, but it is an option for schools at this time depending on the offense of the student.
Okay, so you know, if it's a level two offense and it's the first time, would that be taken into consideration as opposed to somebody with maybe multiple infractions?
It would be and additionally, we can take any input from today and come back together as a team and reevaluate that as well. So any input that you have today, we'll also consider. In terms of restorative practices, we were, thank you for mentioning that piece. It was a part that we were really pleased to be able to add and the response that we got from all of the stakeholders and we were also following up with that on a summer series for teachers. So we'll be offering a training option each week for six weeks. So not only are we putting in the code of conduct, but we're giving teachers the tools to also help them implement that in the classroom.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that part. I think it's going to be crucial in moving forward. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher, are you done?
I'm finished, thank you.
Ms. Vaughn, please.
Hi. I actually have three questions. Ask all three and...
Yes.
I'll just do it that way. Okay, I'm interested in whether we're having in preschool week additional teacher training or if that's going to be something the various schools are going to do since there are some changes. As usual, we have a lot of teacher turnover. Quick answer, yes or no? Are we still going with the Prevention Center program? And the other thing is, how many, I don't know what to call them, maybe positive reinforcement people or the special people that have to go with the restorative practices that, you know, I think different schools do it different ways. I toured one school months ago where they have actually kind of a room and somebody there all the time. So you could just talk about the training and if there's a number for those special people, the positive intervention people, if that's what they're called, and whether the Prevention Center is still...
Okay. So I'm going to ask Mr. Mangan and Ms. Scott to address two parts of that. For the, yes, we have administrator training that we are scheduling for APs. We will also have teacher training, exactly what that will look like because we're going through so many changes right now with our training. We haven't defined exactly what that will look like, but we know that that will be a piece, especially since students have been out of school. We know that coming back in, our teachers and students are going to need a lot of support in that area in addition to academics. So we've already identified that need. As far as...
I'm sorry, to clarify, so the APs are going to be trained and then it'll be up to the schools to pass along that information to the teachers? Is that what you're saying?
It will actually be two separate trainings. So the APs will have their own, they're doing something specific for assistant principals, primarily they're the individuals who do discipline in the school.
Right, right.
Be going over all the Cessar codes, any changes and also the importance of the restorative practices and using whatever means to keep students in school to support that behavior, but also make sure that it's a safe and orderly learning environment. And then the teacher training will be separate. And then we're also in the process of planning teacher training each month during the school year to include strategies. We have a de-escalation piece planned through ESE, so we already have some dates set for that. So we will have a full schedule of training through the summer, starting in preschool week and going through the entire year.
Okay, so it'll be for the teachers, district trainers? That's what I was trying to get at. Is it district trainers or is it when you train the APs, maybe you bring in a few others and it's like train the trainers and then they pass it? Or a little of both? I'm just curious. Now it's going to be handled.
So our planning for the APs was just for the APs at that point because it's more technical side of the discipline, but then we will have opportunities available for all teachers and we may train the trainer model as well. So those are the things for preschool that we're in discussions and working at right now. And as the individuals at each school, I'll ask Mrs. Scott to address that piece. For the Prevention Center, I'll ask Mr. Mangan to come up and just talk about the plan for that for next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. At this time, we are planning on bringing back the Prevention Center. It has had 137 students assigned to it so far this year. We have pulled together the data to answer the questions that were brought up back in January. We're waiting for the end of the year in regards to what schools we're sending, we're sending students there, what grade levels, number of students that happen to have a recidivism rate on that, breaking it down by ethnicity, gender, and we will have that for the board as a wrap-up along with our OSS stat at the end of the year. With that, Mrs. Scott?
Good afternoon. In regards to, I believe you're mentioning the Intervention Support Specialist position that all schools receive. We do provide training throughout the year for all intervention support specialists and the training is specialized in regards to all types of behavior intervention. So this in essence, a train the trainer type of model because we do have access to that one individual and then what they learn through us, they go back to their schools and they support their teachers, they model and coach and so forth. In addition to that, Mr. Bradley has already arranged for our PBIS training, our Positive Behavior Intervention Support training for the summer that will start in an online virtual plan the week of June 15th. So we are adding on additional schools for Tier One training as well as he and I provide Tier Two training. So there are a lot of different pieces. I can't, I, it's not a cut and dry question or answer for you, Mrs. Vaughn, because there's a lot of components. I will say that there's quite a bit of training through Fidlers and our ESE department through our CCEIS Resource Specialists that we work with. They all come together with us and provide training. So there's, there's a lot of different elements in addition to those virtual components that Ms. Duncan was speaking about for our teachers this summer.
Okay, and just to follow up on that, is there any kind of ratio, like if the school has 600 students, they get one slot or is that all? The principal takes his or her budget and makes that decision on school, school side decision?
So currently, every school is funded a .5 position for an Intervention Support Specialist and then schools work with their additional dollars, their flexible spending dollars based on their needs. But we're in a budget crunch right now, so I'm not sure. Yeah, please.
So I was just going to say, five sounds like a large number, especially given the differences in sizes and the differences in needs. There's some competencies that are going to have, depending on their student body, a higher level of need. So that's what I'm trusted in to see how the is doled out to these schools.
So our training for over the summer is virtual, but it's open to any teacher as they want to, since they're not on contract, it's optional for them to join, but we will offer as many opportunities as we need to. So virtually, we might have limits as to who we can train just because of the limits of the, how we can offer the training. But if we have people on a waitlist, we will continue to offer trainings until every person is off that waitlist. So our summer trainings that we were planning for today, we actually are already offering an AM and PM option so that we can make sure that any teacher who might be teaching extended school year or credit retrieval isn't limited and can participate in the afternoon. But if we find that we have full rosters or anybody on a waiting list, we will offer additional opportunities until we meet every teacher that wants that training.
Okay, I'm not sure, maybe I didn't make my question clear. Aren't there some people at different schools or, at least the school that I toured, one of the last ones that I toured before the shutdown, where they were designated people and that's all they, and I'm not talking about just, which is important for a teacher in a classroom to understand, but that's, that's really what I was getting at. How many, with our teacher crunch and budget and all, how many funded slots are there for the designated people? Is it a ratio? How, that's what I'm interested in. How does it work or is it totally the principal's discretion? It's, sorry to make this so long, but that was the question that I wanted answered.
So for the intervention specialist, so the designated people at each school for trainings, they participate in the training. So if we offer an opportunity, like Tammy was talking about, the opportunity for the intervention support specialist, they can participate. If it's another person at the school, like a behavior specialist, they have an opportunity as well. Are you asking something different?
It's not, yeah, I'm not asking about the training, I'm sorry. I'm asking how many are designated for school? That's...
So each school has a .5 intervention specialist at a minimum. Now, some schools have a percentage because they've chosen to increase that. And then some of our schools also have a behavior specialist through IDEA and that's determined by the program or the ESE programs at their school. And some, some principals make individual decisions about those supports, but every has at least a .5 ISS.
That, thank you. That was, that was what I was asking. Thank you. That's it. Okay, thank you, Jessica. Ms. Patrica, please?
Hi, thank you. The, it always gives me comfort when I see this group come in front of the board to know that our students are in good hands because you guys are now really pour your hearts into making sure that our students are well-rounded. So thank you for your work. I love the visual changes that you've made. I think they'll be more engaging for students, or at least I hope they will be. My question is, do we need to be including anything in the behaviors section with regard to CDC guidelines and whatever kinds of requirements we're going to have in place at the beginning of the school year and as we go on with, you know, whatever our learning is going to look like in our schools? I know Attorney Dupree Bruno and I had a conversation about this, I think last week or maybe earlier this week. And what would that look like and is that something we're considering?
So possibly, so we can investigate that further with our chiefs and Dr. Atkins and also our district attorneys. And if, if that's necessary, we could talk about the inclusion of that, if that's a component that needs to be in there for sure. Okay, I needed a note of that.
Yeah, Dr. Atkins, if you could just report back to us after you've had that conversation with staff, I'd really appreciate it.
I will do.
Thank you. And also, just in case anybody didn't hear, I'm not, I'm not on video because my video's not working. I'm not, like, not playing nicely. Literally, it's broken. So I'm trying to fix it, but for now, all you hear is my voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Ms. Gittens, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all so much for the report. I have a couple of quick questions. And I know you kind of said this within the context of the presentation, but if you could extract what specific strategies are being included that may not have been included before to address the disparities in OSS for minority students and students with disabilities?
So the section that was included is for all students, but instead of going straight to discipline, so where we see that disparity is when we have a very consequence-based strategy rather than how do we support that student and changing the behavior? So every strategy that's in the MTSS section and the Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three, I think there were 50 strategies, every strategy in there is a newly included strategy.
A newly included strategy for all students, you're saying?
For all students.
Okay, I guess, I mean, my concern is that with the disparity of that, that has been an issue and we've discussed it and it's been brought out. And I think rather than saying it's all one size fits all, because how will the teachers and administrators kind of, you know, adapt to that if everybody is treated the same? When we have students that are at a higher ratio in those particular areas. And I thought that there was something more specific to even show the community and, you know, parents, what we are doing to help that specific demographic of students that is different from the others.
So there's not a different plan within the plan for population of students, but we do have specialized training. So our faculty leads, which are four principals, look at the data each month for students. And we have included training. So we had Dr. Mann come in before we went virtual. She came in, she met with our principals, she met with all of our ISS team, and then she had a parent group that evening. And one of the things she did work to address was disparity in education. So we have those team, team leaders who look at that data each month along with, we're looking at it through Student Services in conjunction with ESE because not only are we looking at discipline, but we're looking at those other factors like disproportionality and identification.
Excuse me. Okay, I know that there is a specific agreement within NAACP and I believe that some of the superintendent and some of the board members participate in that discussion and agreement. And when I was a part of that group, that was one of the major issues. So I think even to make sure that we're following that and showing that we are making some type of different or special efforts to decrease those numbers that for so long have been stagnant. I mean, they have been the highest and they have not significantly reduced. So I'm just saying that in my suggestion, we should have something specifically stated. But thank you for that answer.
Yes, I'll note that as well with the information from the CDC that we're going to follow up on. So we'll work with our district attorneys and review that and also any information that we may need to look at with a lens for disparity. We'll do that as well.
Yeah, I think, and the reason, you know, the reason it was so important to me as well, we will have a lot of new teachers that are new to teaching. And when they get their training and they look at their documents and they say, this is what you do for this, it's kind of hard to assume that they will have the background knowledge and ability to see the difference at that time. So that's why I bring it up. Thank you. The second question, I think it was Ms. Taylor mentioned in the requirements for graduation, the mental health, and I don't know if I slept through that one or not. What is the mental health graduation requirement?
Those aren't aligned. The graduation requirements, so you want to come speak to that. The mental health requirement was state requirement that each student have training in different areas of mental health. But graduation requirements are different. So I'll let Ms. Taylor discuss the differences of each and what she was talking about with that piece.
Well, before you leave though, let me ask you this. You mentioned that it's a generic thing. Does that speak to the bill that Ms. Fisher and the board had put forth about mental health? Is that what we're talking about overall, that students have training?
For, for part of that component, the addition was just related to the training required through the Florida Department of Education. It was specific to that piece.
Okay, thank you.
Should we talk about the graduation? Okay. Okay, so just to clarify, so we did add the Florida Department of Ed graduation requirements. A great opportunity for us just to be really clear with our secondary students and families. And then you will notice in another area, there is a statement directly from our School Counseling and Mental Health Department, Lori Brooks and her work, that states very clear what the mental health requirements for instruction are. So two different things.
Okay, thank you very much. And I don't know if this, I think this would be someone else, but it's about the Prevention Center.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
We're, if you have one quick question, because we have two other board members that have to ask and we're off our schedule already.
Okay, it's very quick. Hi, Mr. Mangan. It's about the Prevention Center. And I have questions about, and this may mean a briefing or workshop later on, about the discipline policies and how they are enforced at the Prevention Center. And what's the other one right next door? The-
The Success Academy?
Success Academy, yes. So I do have questions on that. And since we're short in time, I would appreciate maybe a follow-up to explain what that is, to see some data, how they do it at both sites, and previous data from how it worked. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Will do. Thank you.
Mr. Mangan? I just to make sure that you understood what her, what her need was. So before you go, you understand what she's asking you for?
She would like me to provide her with an explanation.
I don't care, I don't have to repeat it to you. I just want to make sure that you're clear on that.
I am clear on it. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Ms. Jevanelli, please?
I might, I'm going to be real quick. I just want to echo what Mary had requested and spoke about regarding the out-of-school suspension. I just want to encourage, make sure that we are encouraging admin to embrace the restorative practices. And, and thank you for updating that as well. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jevanelli. And Ms. Morgan, please?
Yeah, I have no new questions, but I feel like so much work was done on this. I really needed to compliment staff. I mean, you basically rewritten the document in a way that's user-friendly and you've incorporated a lot of the stuff that we've been talking about over the past year with respect to student conduct and, and behavior and how we manage it in the district. You've made it very clear to parents, students, you know, how we operate, what our expectations are, you know, what you will be held accountable for. I think that's fabulous. The organization, the format, the graphics, the additions, Title Nine, ESE, all of it is a fantastic effort. And I just want to compliment everybody on the work and the outcome. Thank you.
And I just wanted to say real quick too, Ms. Duncan, when Ms. Gittens was talking about the NAACP, all of you are involved in those meetings. So just so that everybody is clear that they are engaged, they know what's going on, and they are there at every meeting. So now if we could move on to subject two, Adult Code of Conduct? Thank you so much for all of your input for the Student Code of Conduct. Mr. Mangan will be coming up now for the Adult Code of Conduct.
Good afternoon again. For the Adult Code of Conduct, there is not a great deal of change in it. Directors Everly from the Southwest Florida Public Service Academy, Mr. Rosell from Fort Myers Technical College, Mr. Peace from the April Technical College, and Mrs. Davis from Adult Core Ed reviewed the Code of Conduct. They did have two updates, the Envision 2030, which is aligned with the ones that you see in the primary and secondary Code of Conducts. And also the nondiscrimination statement has been updated. The only addition that they've put into it this year is their brief statement of long-range objectives as an organizational level. Other than that, they have decided to leave the Adult Code of Conduct as is and forwarded it for your recommendation. I do have Mr. Everly standing by with text response if need be.
Great, thank you. I do have one hand up, which is Ms. Fisher, please, with a question? Ms. Fisher, do you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I saw your hand up.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. That was from before, but I don't have a question about the Adult Code of Conduct. Thank you.
So I think we're good with that then, Mr. Mangan. And I thank you so very much and I thank all of you for sharing with us today.
Thank you. Mrs. Duncan has one last thing.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for giving us this time today. Just want to say one last thank you to the team. As it was noted by board members, how much work that it's almost a completely new document. So just want to thank Shelly Taylor from Graduation, Tammy Scott with MTSS, Chuck Bradley with Equity in 504, Teresa Bowen with ESE, Brian Mangan, who works directly with us with discipline, and also two individuals not here with us today, Amy Clark with Social Work and Psychological Services, and also Lori Brooks with Mental Health and Counseling. So thank you to that team who did a tremendous amount of work. Thanks for your input. We are going to go look back at some of these things that you talked to us about today. And we appreciate your time. Thank you. Okay, so we will be moving to Business Services, and I'm not sure if they're ready to go. But I think it's Dr. Desmar who will be speaking on that, the budget briefing.
Yeah, you have Dr. Desmar that will come up, and we also have a presentation that goes along with that.
Perfect, thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Yes, we are ready. We're ready. So I also have with me today Ms. Kelly Letcher, who will, will be tag teaming, sharing this information with you we have today. So as our presentation, our information gets up on the screen, and I believe you all should have copies of those as well. There are many things going on, as you know, and we have so many aspects of the budget to discuss. We know that this year will be complicated, given our circumstances. And I will, the thought I'll start out with is that at this time, there are many unknowns. And I'm sure today that you all will have many questions, as we do, that we might not be able to answer today. But what we can do is make sure that we are asking ourselves the right questions and work to create plans that will put us in a position to successfully balance our budget, whatever our circumstances may be. So as you see here on page one of the document, that gives you a quick overview of some of the items that we'll discuss today. But if we move on to page two of the document, we're going to point out some of the highlights of the budget that came out of the Legislative Conference, but at this point has not gone anywhere beyond that, not to the governor anywhere. So Ms. Letcher is going to point out some of the highlights of that document.
So hi, we were really looking forward when we saw this budget. It was a good one for us. We felt like we do have growth. They are expecting growth of about 1,750 students for Lee County. The base student allocation went up $40 per student, which is a really good jump for us, more than we've seen in the past. And that's where the most flexible funding for us comes from. So that is always a good thing when that number jumps higher. The other part, as you all remember, was the Salary Enhancement allocation of $16 million. That was one of the biggest chunks that came in. And from what we're hearing is probably one of the areas that the legislative session is going to go back and look at. Part of that money was funded from the Best and Brightest Teacher Allocation. We had received $9 million from that last year, and they moved that money from the Best and Brightest into the Salary Enhancement. But we were looking at a total funding of about $34 million additional dollars. And that was going to equate to about $8,005.46 per student that we would have received, and that was a 2.74% increase. Looking at that, some things I just want to remind you is that there was a FRS increase this year. It went up substantially. That increase is going to cost us $7 million. And so that is not going away. It does not look like that legislators are looking at reducing that at all. So that looks like we will still have that $7 million that we have to come up with. This has not been signed by the governor. It hasn't gone to the governor. And we have heard that they are going back to special session, but we have not heard any additional information on when that special session might be or what they're considering at that point.
So just to again highlight some of the points from that, remember, this budget has not been signed by the governor. This came out of the Legislative Conference but has not gone anywhere for approval after that. We have, I'm sure you all have probably seen this document, but together as a group, we hadn't had the opportunity since all of these things began to happen to be able to share that information with you, go over some of the highlights and points of it to understand what the impact might have been on our district. So no, no action taken by the governor on this budget. And as Kelly said, the special session is likely, but we have no idea when. So the when of that is not known. And no other information from the state related to budget has been received beyond this proposal of the FEFP run. So now, moving into page three of the document then, this illustrates some of the different scenarios that we could potentially see within our budget cycle for this year. So as, as I keep stating, we have no official information. There's not been any information that we've received from the state. All we have at this point is our estimates and our best thoughts based on any of the data that we can gather at this point. So we're making estimates, our best guesses of what may happen now, based on very limited information. So part of our process moving forward will be to continue to gather additional information, come up with what we think realistic scenarios for the budget will be, and then put ourselves in a position to be able to react to whatever situation may come our way. So I'm going to turn this back over to Kelly again and again for the document we're looking at, page three of that. page three of that, of the document, illustrates the different budget scenarios that we could possibly see for next year and that we need to work towards planning for.
So thank you. So what you're looking at is the first one is the conference report. You see there is the seven hundred and sixty-nine million under the total FFP that we were expecting to see from the conference report, which was a cost per unweighted student of eight thousand and five dollars. So some of the things that we've heard is that we can expect to go back a decade in the funding. So if we did that, we went back to 2008 and looked at the per student unweighted cost that we were receiving at that time, which was seven thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So we took that number and said, okay, so based on our student population as of right now, if that's what we were getting per student, what would that look like? And as you can see at the very bottom of that page, if we were to go back to that 2008 funding of seven thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars per student, we would lose about fifty million dollars out of the current allocation that was provided to us. So we, you know, thought, okay, well, let's look at some other scenarios and see what might happen. We looked at 2010, which was in the middle of the last recession that we were under, which we had a per student allocation at that time of one, seven thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars. And we said, okay, what if we were to go back to that timeframe? If we were to go back to that timeframe, we're looking at an eighty-two million dollar loss for Lee County. So we looked at then and said, okay, so what was, what did it look like in 2012, which was the worst year for our funding? That was, if you remember, when the recession happened, the federal government came up with what they called ARA funds to help school districts through that. In 2012, the ARA funds went away, and our per student unweighted FTE was at six thousand five hundred and nine dollars. If it was to go back to that point, we would lose a hundred and forty-three million dollars. So we, we were looking at all different scenarios of things that might happen. We went back and said, okay, so what if we just went back to 2019? What if the funding level just went back to that? What would we be looking at? That was, we were at seven thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars per student at that point. We would be looking at about a forty-four point three million dollar loss. And so the last scenario that we ran is what if we just went back to last year's funding? So what if they said, okay, we're just not going to do anything at that point? At seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars per student, we would be looking at about a twenty million dollar loss. So as you can see, we've run many scenarios. Again, none of it is known. We have no idea where we're going to end up. We're just taking some shots and working our scenarios off of that. Turn it back over to Amy.
All right, so the bottom line then of the different scenarios that we have right now are anywhere from either a two hundred and thirteen dollar per FTE loss to almost fifteen hundred dollars per FTE, between twenty million and a hundred and forty-three million. So are we on base with any of these estimates? We just don't necessarily know, because information is, you know, at, at a minimum at this point. But we have to start somewhere. So we have to begin to start by figuring out what, what do we want to use in terms of estimates? And then our next step then, as a group, would be to determine which estimates feel like those are the ones that we want to work towards planning for, based on the information that we have. We'll continue to add information we know along the way, and then we'll build our contingency plans for various steps of the budget based on some of the different scenarios that we may see. But the bottom line is, we have to make sure that we position the district to be able to respond to whatever the budget situation will be. At the end of the day, after all information is known and we get our information from the state. So of course, we can't wait for that information. We have to move at this point. So going back to the document then, looking at page four of that document, we've talked about what the number for the budget is that we've gotten out of the legislature. We talked about some of the different scenarios and what the potential budget impact could be. Now let's put that into a little perspective by talking about some of the things that are in the budget. And one of the biggest expenditures in the budget is the school allocation. So starting on page four of your document, that page details the formulas that we used to fund the schools. Over five hundred and twenty-nine million is dedicated to the school funding formula. And that doesn't include charter schools. There's another ninety-nine million approximately, right, that estimated that will be in for charter schools. But of the school funding formula that you see on the pages that detail the formulas between pages four and six of your document, over five hundred and twenty-nine million is dedicated to school funding. So in this year, there were several adjustments that we made to the school allocation, which included reading coaches at the elementary level, the reallocation of those to the elementary level based on guidance from the state, increased intervention and behavior support at the elementary schools, and changes in the teacher allocation at the high school level. Now, the reallocation of those teachers at the high school level did originally start based on the proposed change to the schedule, to the seven-period day. However, based on the pending budget changes and what the future may bring, we are holding steady with our current allocation for the high schools. We had the discussion with the high schools, and we were, we are working with each one of them in order to bring the allocation into, into alignment with building their, their new schedule based on the four-by-four block. So we're doing that by a combination of different things, where the, the principals are working on adjustments to classes in their schedules. They're working on adjustments to class sizes within the schedule. Teachers are picking up, or planning on teachers to pick up extra periods in order to accommodate some of the additional sections in the schedule that would be needed. And we are also doing some additional allocations in some cases. And we are being successful so far at making it work. Regardless of the budget, principals have been corresponded with about the fact that coming up in future years, we would necessarily fund that four-by-four block schedule at the same level as it had been before. So based on the information, that information, based on those adjustments and the work that the principals have been doing at their level as far as the schedules, our conversations with them and some additional things that we've been doing in terms of giving some additional allocations, we have been successful so far at making it work. And that in part, you know, is a real testament to the dedication and resolve of our principals. So a, a pause right there, just to ask if there are any questions related to any of the information that we've gone through so far in terms of the school funding formulas, the scenarios that we have and the budgets that we've received from the state?
Okay, um, is there anyone who has any questions? Because I do not see any hands up.
Okay, all right. Wonderful. Then I'll continue.
Thank you.
So holding, holding firm on that school allocation allows the district to preserve about eight million dollars. And given the scenarios we discussed earlier, it's very important that we preserve where we can. So our job now is to create the budget reduction plans to enact in the case of the various scenarios that we decide are feasible. So to put the numbers in perspective, remember that the seven hundred, seven hundred and sixty-nine million dollars was the initial allocation from the legislature. About eighty percent of that is dedicated to the school allocation, and that includes charters. With our traditionals and charters, about eighty percent of that seven hundred and sixty-nine million is wrapped up within our school allocation. So it is clear to see that in any of the more drastic scenarios, anything in which we would have to reduce over a hundred million dollars will cause a substantial and a detrimental impact to both school and department budgets. And because our budget is very labor-intensive, or that is, seventy percent of our budget is people, any cut to the budget will have a substantial impact on our people, whether that be related to salaries or whether that be related to actual positions. So I think it's important to bring those numbers into perspective. At a hundred million dollar cut, we could wipe out the entire, the entire central office staff and not make it to a hundred million. So to put those numbers in, I think it's important to put those numbers into perspective.
I'm sorry, I see, Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so my question is this. Has any member of the legislature reached out to the superintendent or any member of staff to talk about, you know, these ballpark numbers and what the impact would be on the district? Has there been any communication at all?
Not, not.
Well, yeah, the only communication we've received at this point, I did have a conversation with Representative Roach recently. And during that conversation, you know, he, he also expressed that there were a lot of unknowns from his perspective. So he had a very difficult time, you know, predicting what he felt it would be. You know, he had mentioned it could set us back, you know, a decade or more, but that was speculation on his part, and he made clear that that's what it was. So we've had that contact, but that's it.
Okay, but, but we've not, we've not reached out in a, in a more aggressive way to say, look, we know this is, this conversation is taking place, and we know that, that, you know, you're going to be recalled, and you're going to have to have these conversations in Tallahassee. I, I just want you to look at one school district budget, and, and I want you, in front of you, what the impact that would be. Now, is FSBA or the Superintendent's Association or the Finance Association, or any of those associations putting together scenarios based on, let's, you know, if there is a, you know, whatever, cut, or if we cut this percentage, or this percentage, or this percentage, where are we in terms of gutting our infrastructure from a, from a human point of view?
Okay, well, the Superintendent's Association has been predominantly focused on the, on the impact of opening and closing. So they're looking forward to the new school year. We have had discussions relative to the budget, but they haven't been in-depth compared to the discussions that we have had relative to our response today and moving forward. Senator Mumford has also been engaged. He is the executive director of FADS, and he did talk to all superintendents about the, the grim view. They did reassure superintendents that, that the Superintendent's Association would remain very, very engaged and would, and we do have regular meetings where they pass that information on to us. So I, you know, I, I will say that. In addition to that, we are in contact quite frequently, particularly with Collier County. And so we stay in touch with Cam Patton and her group. And we also talk about different scenarios that we go on. We feel that it's very important for our districts to stay pretty much in alignment with how we're responding to things, because I think that gives us, you know, cohesiveness through this area. But also, you know, we, we continue to try to update each other on different strategies that we would use moving forward. But right now, I mean, honestly, there's just no information from.
But there is information. Amy has just presented us with possible scenarios. And it just seems to me that, you know, we're always passive. We wait to see what they're going to do to us, and then we go back and we tell them what they've done to us. And, you know, I think we all recognize that the money isn't going to be there that we expected. But I, I just, Dr. Desmore, within your association, is there any conversation about taking an aggressive as opposed to a.
District is, is, is doing their best to. Different scenarios that we just talked about. We really have very little idea, you know, where we are going to be in the ballpark as we continue to gather data. We'll get a little bit more of that. But our, one of our next steps, and at the end, we'll talk about next steps in terms of what do we do from here. And one of the things that we will do is work out, reach out to our other districts and within our network in the Finance Officers Association to determine where are other people with their information and scenarios that they could potentially be building? And collectively, how do we want to communicate with our legislators and, you know, with our, with our representatives in Tallahassee and in conjunction with Carol Green, so we can figure out how, how do we approach this very new conversation that everyone is trying to feel their way through?
Well, this is what I would like to see, and I don't know where the other board members are. So you've got one number, twenty million. So take twenty million out of your budget. Is that a haircut across the district? You know, what does that mean? So then let's go to the forty-four million. So that's twice what that, that initial number is. So what does forty-four million dollars look like? You know, what kind of haircut is that? Or, you know, percentage across, if we're not going to be able to do this as a percentage reduction in budget, we're not going to be able to say every department, every school, take a ten percent cut. So what are we really looking at? What makes up forty-four million dollars out of our budget? It's staff, it's programs. And I think, I think we need to put a face with these numbers now. And I think we need to be more proactive as a board. I, I, I don't know.
Mrs. Morgan, I will tell you, just with all due respect, we're bringing this to you now. The whole point of what I've asked our team to do is just what you're asking for already. So we're already there. I just, we just have to have the time to sit down and develop what those are, which is what, what we need to be doing and are planning to do.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry. I hope I haven't rattled you and Dr. Desmore and the finance people then. If that's the path you're on, I have nothing more to say. I am very grateful for the work that you are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, please.
Green. So she talks a little bit about the first week in May, and she's, I'm just going to read into this and get to the point. As for any other news out of Tallahassee, we are not seeing much movement in regards to bills being presented to the governor that include the General Appropriations Act and accompanying bills to implement that act. So it's, she says, in fact, the only budget-related bill to be presented and signed is the tax package, and that was in quotes. And, and she said, we, we're still on track to see the economists come together either later this month or the first of June. And then they'll have an opportunity to evaluate the impact from the tax loss in April from the sales tax revenue. And she said, there's a little doubt that this will be devastating since seventy-four percent of the general, Florida's general revenue is funded from sales tax. So the bottom line is that there appears to be no rush for any special session, and the current budget appears to need no adjustment at this time. The bigger concern being how to decide what to do with next year's budget. So I think as we're looking at our future prospects, you know, and I'm assuming Dr. Atkins at staff is looking at, at things like not only personnel, but positions, and also maybe things like class size and other streamlining of programs. So I know, which would include something like the schedule change.
We have to look at, we are looking at all of those things. I mean, certainly the ratio, staffing ratios, staffing levels, program, you know, to where you're really cutting back to, you know, essentials is what we have to really focus on. I will say one thing that gives us a little bit of a ray of hope that Senator Mumford mentioned in one of the, the recent calls with the superintendents was that he did speak to the state's healthy reserve. They have been working very hard to build up that reserve for rainy days such as this. And I think if there was a rainy day, this is definitely, definitely that. We also are looking at the CARES package from the federal government, and how is that also going to impact local districts similar to ARA, which is what, you know, Dr. Desmore has mentioned earlier. That was a, a well-needed infusion back in 2008, nine, and 10. That was very helpful. So all of this stuff comes into play.
Yes, yes, thank you. And thank you, Mrs. Morgan, for bringing that up. And I think I. Yes. Yes, thank you. And thank you, Mrs. Morgan, for bringing that up. And I think I, I do agree with you that I think we have to be more assertive in our communication with the legislature rather than taking a, a sit and wait attitude because, and I'm not suggesting that staff is sitting and waiting because I know a lot of work is being done. But I think that we, as the elected officials and representatives, need to start to be more assertive in our communications. And maybe we can start with Ms. Green, but, you know, we, we have the opportunity to contact each one of our representatives. And I know this is an election year, so that's going to be a change, but that might not be a bad thing either. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. And I definitely agree with both of you there. If I could, Ms. Patrica, please.
So Kathleen, you asked about FSBA. We're asking for flexibility. Flexibility is the big word that we're using with, in terms of funding. Instead of them telling us where to put the money, we get to figure out where the money goes. So that's the big push there. There was, I agree with the superintendent 100%. We had that great FSBA call on Friday about finance and we had four finance chiefs from districts across the state and they gave us, they gave us ideas of questions to be asking. And nowhere in that conference was there any indication that the answers exist today. It was just a matter of what questions should we be asking, making sure that staff is looking at various scenarios. And, and they are. Our staff here in Lee County is looking at those various scenarios. The reason why the state can't, can't get any kind of a feel for revenues is because we're not going to know until, what is it, May 25th, when the EDR numbers come out? So the end of this month is when the state is going to have a clue. So we talk about preparing the public. I think it's really important for us from a communications perspective to get out and prepare the public for what these various scenarios could look like. Dr. Desmore, you said something about $100 million cut doesn't, $100 million means, could mean we wipe out the administration and it still doesn't make up $100 million. What was it that you said?
I did, yes. That's what I said. I said, you know, based on the, the budget and just to put the numbers into perspective, you know, at $100 million cut, we could decimate the entire central office and not get to $100 million. So.
Those are the kinds of statements, I'm sorry, those are the kinds of statements that I think are really, really illustrate the seriousness of what we're dealing with here. And we do, you know, we got a lot of pushback over a schedule change. Imagine the pushback that we're going to get over classrooms that have a lot more students in them than usual. And that pushback won't just come from parents, that will come from teachers as well. So I think it's a matter of shared sacrifice as a community and that, that's how I view it. We are going to have to give a lot up and preparing our community to the greatest extent possible for those sacrifices, I think, is a big part of our job right now. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Ms. Chievenelli, please.
Hi. So actually, Ms. Morgan asked the questions that I was going to, you know, mention and she actually, you know, being proactive instead of reactive. So, and to know that the district's doing that, that's great. And I had made a little note, Carol Green, and then to work through, to start with Carol, because that's what we, you know, we have in place. So she's already being proactive and I love that because that's how we have to be, as Ms. Patrica just said, in preparation. So my thoughts is also just being very conservative and maybe picking the lowest calculation and shooting low and then hopefully we'll get a number that we can work with by shooting, being very conservative and, and then just working with those numbers at that point. Because anything above that is going to be kind of extra, even though it's not. But you know what I mean? Because we've already prepared for the worst and, and hoping for the best. It's like, you know, hurricane preparation and we've done that before, so I know that we can do that again. It's just a matter of, you know, collaborating with everyone and figuring out where you can cut those little corners and things that are needed, that are always needed, but we can still cut them and do without them, maybe just a year. So I'm hoping this is just for one year, not residuals that COVID is going to carry into the, our next year's budget. And it very well could be, but this is right now. We just have to look at this right now. So, and thank you for all your work, Dr. Desmore. Thank you. That's it.
Okay, I have Ms. Vaughn and then Ms. Gittens and it's 212 and we have two more things to go through.
Okay. And just, and just to note too, that we do have some additional information that we wanted to share with you. So just, just noting that as well.
Okay, just very briefly, I want to echo what has been said by members who say that we, we need to be more assertive and I absolutely agree with that. And it's going to be very, very tricky because not only is it an election year, it's a presidential election year. So that means both parties are going to be hyper aware of, of the constituents and that actually could work in our favor. I would, I would, Dr. Atkins mentioned that you're, that you're already looking at the different ratios. And just for general awareness, if, if you have figures on, on ratios, I know it's easy to find like principal salary or APs or that sort of thing, but it's difficult to look at the central office staff and see what kind of ratios we have. And I'd be interested in, in, in taking a look at that just to see, it just works out so much better, even though you're working on the information, we're not, it works out so much better when we share the knowledge of exactly what's being, the kinds of things that are, that are being done. And so those, that's my comment and my request.
All right, we'll bring that, we'll bring that back up. We did, there was a report that we did issue out of Human Resources that did have some ratios to it, but, you know, and certainly we can expand on that. In addition, the document that Amy has provided to you all in backup does have some examples of some ratios that we do have when we're staffing. Yes.
Yeah, I saw the schools and, and, and that sort of thing. So, yeah, and I've already submitted to Ms. Fisher, what we can, things that we can do as a board that will cut that, because I think we have to be models as, as well. That discussion for another day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Gittens? Ms. Gittens, are you there? Ms. Gittens? Okay, I'm not sure where she went. Ms. Patrica, did you have something else to say? I see a hand. I'm not sure if that was already there.
Yeah, no, super quickly, clawbacks. What could clawbacks look like? So if they take money away after the, the school year starts, that's something we should be preparing the public for. And also go several. So it can do that very quickly. Within the next five to seven minutes, we'll finish up the information that we wanted to make sure we shared with you today. So part of utilizing that budget impact for next year is understanding how our budget will end up in this current year. So we've been asked various times how the shutdown has, has affected our budget in this year. And in your document on page eight, we do note some items that are impacts, some are cost savings, some might be additional costs, and then there's also considerations moving forward about where revenue might be lost based on what's happening right now. So I'm going to have Kelly give a few examples of those on page eight of the document and then we'll, we'll conclude.
Thank you. So in the savings area, we, we know our buses aren't out on the roads right now, except we're in the grab and go areas. So we think we will, we know we will have some saving in some diesel fuel costs. Substitutes in the classrooms are not being utilized right now because they are, we have our teachers doing distance learning. So there's some areas, you have a list of them. I won't go through every one of them, so we can get through some, some time here. But we also know there's going to be additional costs. So those are the things that we're looking at. We are, we, as a government agency, are required to cover our own unemployment costs. So anytime somebody applies for unemployment and is granted unemployment, we pay that. In the past, our, our unemployment costs have been really getting very low. We have not had to utilize that much. We believe that will change. We have substitute teachers that in the past have not been able to utilize their unemployment benefits during the summer because there was no guarantee of a job. It was, you know, type of a, you know, they worked through the year and that's it. However, in this, at this point, we are assuming that the government's going to be a little bit more lenient with that. And if we have substitutes that are applying for unemployment, we believe that will probably be granted and that's going to make our costs go up. We also have short course instructors and people like that, that might be utilizing that. And the HR department is going to start watching that and tracking that as they come in so that we can try and keep you all updated as that happens. We know that we have had to put money out for hotspots and things like that. So there's just those additional costs that we have, we're incurring due to the COVID-19. We believe there will be some loss of funding. We're, we're sure there's going to be loss of funding and we're trying to figure out exactly where that's going to be. Yes, you are where the interest rates dropped very low. And while that helps people in other areas, when we count on our interest income to come in, you know, it, it does not really help us. It drops the amount of interest that we're earning very low. We believe that we usually get funding for students who pass their AP, IB, ACE and industry certification test and some IB diplomas and some ACE diplomas. Because of the testing requirements, we're not sure exactly where that's going to fall and how many kids will be able to be tested. So we, we're thinking there'll be some loss of funding there. Our fee-based programs at our schools are not able to run right now, nor do we believe they'll be up and running throughout the summer, at least in June. So that's going to be a loss to our schools and their fee-based programs. And then of course, sales tax, we're sure that the sales tax is going to go down and that will be another area where we'll see some loss. So those are the areas that we've identified and we'll keep looking at these areas and all three of them, potential savings, additional costs and loss of funding and try and figure out where we're going to end up at the end of this year to see what we have that we might be able to use going into next year to help us get through this.
So we have to continue to analyze this information to know how much we may be able to save this year to help with future shortfalls. So this really is where the district's reserves come into play that might help us mitigate the potential impact of the loss. So in terms of looking at how we will handle next year's crisis, we have to determine not only what revenue we believe we're going to get from next year, but also where we think we're going to land in the current budget year to determine how much of our reserves can we apply towards this to help mitigate any potential loss while still understanding the district's, the district's responsibility to be fiscally responsible and make sure that at the end of the day, we do have sufficient reserves to be able to be financially responsible in anything else that may occur beyond this point. Right? So that's the balancing act. As you remember, you may remember, we sent an email to all of our leadership about essential spending, reminding them about what the upcoming financial challenges are, keeping that in the forefront of our minds as we navigate over the next several months. So each of us in leadership positions are very cognizant and very aware of what this budget situation could bring, knowing that we need to modify our, our spending behaviors so that we're keeping this in the forefront and only focus on what's essential at this point. So some information that you have in your packet, we know that, you know, people want answers as to how the recent events have impacted the economy and we're gathering any data that we can, like the report that you see starting on page 10 of your information. This was from the Regional Institute out of FGCU. They basically did a survey of businesses in our area and there's just a couple of things you can, if you haven't read through there completely, you can at your leisure just to kind of get a little information. But it just was giving us a sense of what the impact is. So a few things that we wanted to point out, we saw that as far as sales revenue of the respondents to the survey, 61% reported a decrease in revenue, a decrease of over 50% to their revenue. 20% of the respondents had laid off more than 80% of their employees. And then over one third of small firms and 20% of large firms reduced hours for more than 80% of their employees. So just some, just an example of some of the information that we're receiving right now, that we're doing our best to try to gather. We don't necessarily draw any conclusions from this particular data, but it does give us some perspective on the severity that's going on in our area and how all of this might have an impact, not only in our general fund, because as was mentioned earlier, sales tax at the state level is a major driver of funds that we get through the FEFP, but also the impact that it might have on our capital budget in terms of the specific half cent sales tax for us. So I take you to the very last page of your document, on page 49, where we talk about some potential sales tax revenue, half cent sales tax revenue projections. And I will turn that over to Kelly to give you some information related to that.
Thank you. So on that page, you'll see, to date, we've collected about $89 million in sales tax. And on the left-hand side, you can see the amounts that we've received and then our projections moving out. This, it's important to note that, remember, the collection runs two months behind. So you'll see in June, our projected amount drops drastically from where we were previously because that's when the April sales tax, things are going to come in. So we're projecting that in June is when we're going to see that reduction. And we're thinking that this year, we're going to see about a $9 million decrease in what we were projecting for this year. We were projecting about $83 million. We're projecting we're probably going to get around 75 instead. So that is for the current year because we're going to see that in the last couple of months. For next year, we were looking at a projection of about $88.8 million. We've looked at that and gone through some different scenarios. The first one is if the economy, if you see on the top of the page there, projection one, is if the economy comes back at a slow pace, then we're believing that the projection could go down by about $31 million in our, for the sales tax. If the economy comes back a little bit quicker than that, we're projecting about $16 million. And then the last projection, number three, assumes that, you know, we'll get through this pretty quickly and we'll be, we'll have a slow, comfortable recovery and the loss will only be around $11 million. Of course, none of this is set in stone. It's all guesses. When we did look at this, I will tell you, the lowest projection of sales tax came in at about 20, in 2014, we went back through those years, and that is around where our projection would fall. So it would take us back to sales collections of 2014. And then the highest one of the $11 million losses going back from about two years ago's collections. So that's where we are with what we're projecting for sales tax.
So mind that this is just one year's possible projection. So we'll continue to gather information and build five and 10-year revenue projections for our capital plan that conservatively estimate the economic impact over that period of time and then prioritize our capital projects to fit into that revenue estimate. So, but the addition of the sales tax or capital situation was much brighter than what it had been, but our, we're projecting that our sales tax revenue could take a substantial hit, which will substantially affect our capital plan. So one of the questions had, that had come up before was that Collier, Collier County plans to go to voters to ask permission to reduce their capital millage, right, and then increase their operating millage in order to help mitigate some of the impact to their operating budget for next year. But I, our situation is very different from Collier's. So just to give you some numbers, so Collier this year was estimated to receive 141 mil, 141 million in capital millage funds for this year and they have 51 traditional schools. We are budgeted to receive $10 million less than that for 95 schools. So our situation is, is, is very different. Their tax role is almost 8% larger than ours for half the number of kids. So as we determine how we'll move forward, we have to take that into account. And so this millage swap, so to speak, or I'll call it, you know, might be an option for us to consider, but I, I believe we probably do want to wait until we have some more information. But I, I believe we probably do want to wait until we have some more information to determine the best strategy for our district, giving, uh, given our specific circumstances. And so I, I know that had been a question, so we just wanted to make sure that we provided that information. So very quickly, then we'll talk next steps in our budget, in our decision process. So first of all, we'll continue to share budget information at each briefing.
This is really an important subject and we had twenty minutes, um, allotted for this presentation. We've already gone over twenty-five minutes and we still have two more presentations to, to go on before we're completed to be on the, uh, for our action board meeting. So I guess my question is, um, do we continue this conversation? And what do we do with the other, um?
Ms. Jordan, this is Ms. Gitten.
I think, I think you have your hand up, Ms. Gitten.
Okay, no one is calling on me and I haven't had an opportunity to weigh in at all.
I, I did call on you and I'm still going to give you the opportunity to speak, but I, I'm just trying to figure this out because of time constraints. So if someone could please, um, Ms. Bruno or, uh, Dr. Atkins, tell me where, where we should go with this.
I think we're, we're, we're good. We can take the final questions that you have. We were just going to make sure to lay out, um, what the next steps are. So just know that we're coming back to you a- at each briefing after this to continue to share information. With the final thought of making sure that we are communicating along the way with our staff and community, um, related to our progress. And I'll take questions and we're, we'll be ready for you to move on.
Okay. And again, I know this is really, really crucial for us, this information, and we should have just had, um, more time allotted for it. So I, I do apologize for that.
No problem.
And Gittens, I, we, I did call on you, uh, several times. So if you have a question, if you could please ask the question and then we'll move on to the next, uh, speaker.
Okay, Ms. Jordan, it is not my fault that the equipment is not working properly. And I raised my hand, but, excuse me, I raised my hand, I sent emails and all that. So I do feel that it is important that I get an opportunity to speak as well.
I'm giving you the opportunity. Please, please ask your question.
Because this is such an important, a- and, and this actually solidifies what one of the statements I was going to make. We as the governance team, one of our, our major jobs is finance oversight. And I find it difficult for me as a board member to not have workshops on these types of things. I believe we need to have workshops, not just a briefing to tell us what is going to be done. We have the ability, we have the knowledge, we need to know what is happening. And I am suggesting that we workshop to have the significant time to discuss, to talk about ideas and thoughts that we and the community that we serve may have. We are constantly just told, this group is going to meet, they're going to come back and tell us what they're doing. I believe it's our duty and our responsibility to also workshop these issues. And perhaps there may be an idea that comes up or a thought that wasn't thought about. So I am asking the board to consider having a workshop as opposed to just a briefing. So that's one thing. The other questions that I had, I am, I heard, uh, the presentation about the fact that we are using the seven-period budget in a four-period year. Because, uh, for whatever reason, we didn't stop that budget. And so the administrators in schools are struggling to fit this round peg in this square hole. And it is really causing a lot of issue. Um, they're probably not going to say it, uh, for fear of whatever retribution. But the fact is, it's very difficult to do that. It also brings to fact, what is happening? We're talking about cutting teachers and, and all of that. Are we looking? Or have we looked at some cuts here in the district? Have we looked at taking, um, we have quite a few very, uh, you know, um, very qualified teachers on assignment at the district office. If we're talking cuts, that's something we may have to look at, to place some of those teachers on assignment back in the classrooms, which would mean that would probably reduce the need for as much coaching at a time like this. We, um, really need to, I, in my opinion, need to look pretty deep in some of these things. And I would like to see the specific data on, um, the impact on the layoffs on staff based on the fact that we're using a budget for next year, where we're obviously going to seven periods, in a year that we have four periods. And how, and anyway, that's basically what I need to, to ask. And then finally, the class size amendments, and I've heard several times in several presentations about increasing the class sizes. How will that work with CDC guidelines? Thank you.
Well, and again, just to respond to a part of that, I know that Dr. Decemors did address a number of those things in her presentation. Uh, and as we move forward, we're going to be coming to the board every briefing. Uh, and we can include workshops as well, particularly as we get to key decision points. Right now, I think there's a not, there's too many unknowns to get to key decision points. But once we get to key decision points, we can certainly workshop those items with the board. Uh, I do want to commend Dr. Decemors and her staff. They are working, uh, very closely with our school principals to minimize this impact. And I think that they have to be given that, that due credit, uh, because, uh, we are making sure that teachers do have positions wherever we have to, to make a change. Human resources have been very aggressive, as, as has our budget department been very aggressive with working with our principals to minimize and mitigate the impacts of this, uh, response.
Can I just say then, in closing, I, um, I have never said that everyone isn't working very hard. Everyone in the district right now is, is running in lockstep, I'm sure, with all that's going on. And I do appreciate all that is being done here at the district as well as out in the schools. Um, I speak more with the, the, the employees that are out in the field more than the ones in the district. I appreciate what everyone is doing. And I just wanted to make sure that, um, we're aware that, of the difficulties and, um, that everybody is, is having to deal with. So thank you to everyone, uh, that is having to deal with this. It was a new way of working, something we, none of us expected. So thank you.
We have, we have received all feedback and we'll continue to work on, um, all the feedback and bring back additional information related to the questions that came up today.
Thank you, Dr. Decemors. And just maybe next time when we, um, put the briefing together, we just, uh, a lot more time instead of the twenty minutes. Because of the fact that this is so important and people have questions. So that would be great if we could just kind of hone in on, um, more, a time amount for this.
Good, great. Understood.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we have, uh, moving to, uh, we have affordable housing. And if, if I could ask, um, that we do an abbreviated presentation on that, if possible. We do have, I believe, yeah, it's, uh, two thirty-seven right now. And the action board meeting will be, um, supposed to be starting at three o'clock. And we still have to see if we have public comments. So, um, hi, Dan, how are you?
Doing well.
If, if we could, um, kind of put that together kind of quickly, I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Majority, majority of the presentation is in a format that there's probably a few questions that'll come from it. Um, but it can be addressed, uh, via email or outside of that to me directly, if, if anybody would like. Um, I will share my screen. Oh, there you go. Never mind. And we'll move through this. Uh, affordable housing, addressing the issue. The main, uh, element here is to increase awareness of the current, uh, limitations within our county. Um, this is a summary of, uh, a very large report that was unveiled to Lee County Commissioners on February eighteenth. Um, the key top action items that were requested and provided via that report are listed below. Um, what you will see as you kind of dive into some of my comments under each category is the implication and the impact of housing and transportation on each of these is very real. So if, uh, if item number two is addressed, all four items get a, a beneficial interest and beneficial response. You can go ahead and the next one. Um, this is probably the most shocking and challenging element, uh, in our community. Forty-three percent of Lee County renters', um, uh, household incomes are under thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, only sixteen point four percent of those pay under the eight hundred and seventy-five dollar amount in rent or in ownership costs. Um, our, uh, estimated rental community is somewhere in the forty-five percent range. Um, so when you look at these different incomes and different income allocations, um, under the income groups, uh, you can see what the, uh, allocated rents need to be for each of those different incomes. You can go to the next one. Uh, this is data, um, based off of the state of Florida and what the overall requirement is. If you look down at the bottom, it gets into specifics associated to the county numbers. Um, you see twenty-two dollars and eighty-six cents is what would be required for a family to, uh, affordably pay for housing at the current state in Florida. In Lee County, that drops not substantially, but to, uh, just under twenty dollars to have allocated incomes that are sufficient to pay for the median housing, um, information or availability. Um, so there's, there's a lot that you can digest. Um, I will, I'll make this a five-minute presentation for something that could be probably twenty minutes. Go ahead and get the next one. Uh, clip you skipped to, sorry. Page five. Thank you. Um, this reference is something that just jumps out. Um, at the working minimum wage in the state of Florida, it would take eighty-seven hours to afford a modest one-bedroom rental. Um, this is the reality that a large portion of our population deals with. You can look as you move down what the average renter wage is and the requirement to accomplish, uh, housing. This is somewhat of a restatement, um, but shows the ori- or the, the impact on income versus housing, uh, availability and, and rental costs. Good, page six. This goes through and helps break down the cost of housing, um, and the allocation of income and what it takes for a single adult versus two adults, an infant and a preschooler. Um, and then what the adjustments have been since two thousand and ten to two thousand and sixteen. Um, as all data exists in the past, um, I can say that in at least three of these pages, it references a substantial increase in cost of living in each of the overall markets since the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen and eighteen numbers that we have to use. Um, so it just hyper accentuates the reality that these, these data points put out there. Go to page seven. This is where we get into the combination of housing and transportation. Um, there's a lot of perception that housing is provided because of some of the potential prices of the property that can be seen for sale or for rent in different parts of the community. Um, and I break this down in the overall, um, presentation of the, the housing studies into four different phases, this being our first. Um, ultimately, I'll combine phase two and three for you, um, so that you can see it in a little bit more direct alignment. But, um, what we're ultimately going to show you in the housing availability, um, is where the available homes are. Um, make the transportation substantially more, where you can see that in some scenarios, um, your cost of housing is supposed to be less than thirty percent. Your cost of housing alone is over forty-five percent. And your cost of transportation that should hopefully be in the fifteen percent range, ranges from thirty to fifty percent, um, depending on your location of job and to be, depending on, uh, where you live. Page eight. This is to, uh, a visual that caught my attention and helps explain and, and we'll go into greater depth on what this means for what product is being provided. But if you look at the, uh, number of people, the that are covered by, uh, incomes under fifty thousand dollars. Um, and basically the under fifty thousand dollar marker is the baseline that somebody has to, um, earn in order to have a survivable income in Lee County. Um, and what has made this ultra-difficult is the numbers that go just to the right of where you see, um, our circle included, including have increased dramatically. So it shows our median population's income has, um, jumped from fifty-three thousand to fifty-six thousand since, uh, in two thousand and eighteen, from the two thousand and sixteen data that had been provided. Um, we, again, don't have accurate sense of data, but anticipate that that has gone up even more where our median income might be closer to fifty-nine thousand in our, um, reality for our population. Um, and, and to summarize why that matters and the impact is, when you have such a vast growing population of higher income earners, the home builders, the apartment builders, the developers are building to that population. They're not building to the mass population. And unfortunately, that leaves a monstrous gap, um, in availability of product. And so you see an aging product that we'll dive into more in the next phase of development or, um, ph- phase of presentation for you all. Next page. Um, these are some of the outcomes. These are from a pure economic basis, what the implications are. Uh, unfortunately, if we don't provide housing, if we don't provide transportation, the impact on mental health, physical health, um, violent crimes, uh, drug a- and, uh, addiction issues, um, e- escalate. Um, and so affordable housing helps to impact, um, basically all of our social services. Uh, i- in, in concepts, even reduces the impact on, um, violence and, and challenges that the school district would have internally, um, because of insecurities of housing. Create insecurities in food, create insecurities in parents, create a dramatic domino effect on what the overall economic impact is for our community. Page ten. Um, this is something that, that kind of is, is unique and it's showing what the, uh, theoretical availability of housing is and what the reality is when you start to, uh, play in transportation. So we're going to dive more into this in the next presentation, but it shows that the reality of what is perceived, all of that light yellow, um, coloring, it, when, um, including transportation, the impacts look much more like the map on the right. Um, so this is a combination of what that is. And then we'll also point to in the next presentation, the aging housing stock that are in those areas that are, um, actually affordable. Page eleven. This is just to show you in advance, um, the phases that we intend to present to you all. Um, I have just put out the, uh, the outline for, uh, and I've combined, uh, the next two presentations into one, so that we'll have this in a little bit more attached. Um, so we'll provide what the gap in supply and demand is. That was intended to be presented to our team internally, um, uh, this week and next week, to be presented to you all within sometime middle of May. Um, and we can do that anytime between May and June, um, and combine that with who our heroes are. Um, we've got references internally to incomes from, uh, our team within the, uh, school district as well as, uh, Lee Health and FGCU have provided data as to references for key partners and key, um, stable groups in our community who employ large numbers of people. And then the third and final will be, um, kind of a summary of, uh, options and ideas on how we can participate and be a part of the solution. Page twelve. These are references for you all. Um, this is where the primary forms of the data came from. Um, I've probably got eight or ten other documents and I can provide any third party. They're just substantial in size and so we share via Dropbox. The last page is just a, a closing.
Perfect. Thank you, uh, Dan. Is there, are there any questions, um, that you have that you could ask real quick or otherwise we can send our, um, to Dan personally? I don't see any hands up. Well, I, thank you for the thorough, I mean, I read it all. I really appreciate all the information that you've sent to us. It's, there's a lot there. So I thank you so much. And, um, so next then, uh, Ms. Kathy Ebel. We have you next on the agenda.
Actually, it's Scott, uh, it's Scott.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Dan and I were together on the affordable housing, but, um, Scott is here to talk about the change orders.
Perfect, thank you so much. Hi Scott.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Atkins, um, you are seeing two change orders that are coming before you today. They're all part of the original board-approved total project cost of $98 million. What this is, is in addition to Suffolk and the, uh, for the trailer deployment and also for the landscaping that was required for the DO for Lee County at Gateway High School. Again, this is not an increase to the total project cost. This is a shifting of funds from within this spreadsheet of total project cost to the construction manager to deploy, set up, and erect the portables. Uh, currently, you'll see change order number two for, or 32 for $194,000. That was the cost of the buffering required by the development order of Lee County for our neighbors, uh, to the south of, um, Gateway High School. The second change order you're seeing is for 1.179 million. That is for the deployment, the dragging up of the portables that were with, behind a stairwell that supported Benita High's build to be brought up and added to the portables behind Lehigh for the temporary, um, Gateway or MMM High School staging campus behind Lehigh, August 2020. Now, we had a budget line for that of $1.5 million in the total project cost. So we've actually come in underneath that. The, uh, change order 32, the $194,000, that was money that was not budgeted for. However, I will be utilizing my line item, which was the owner's contingency, which many of you had questions about during the approval process of the total project cost. So it's roughly $2.4 million. That $194,000 will be withdrawn from, from that fund line. Any questions?
Do I, are there any questions regarding this right now? No, I thank you so much. Thank you for everything that you do. Appreciate you.
You as well.
Thank you. Okay, next we have, uh, public comments. Um, Ms. Bruno, do we have any public comments?
We have none from the email and none in the building.
Perfect. Okay, uh, seeing, uh, no public, um, comments, I will go ahead and close the public comments. And now we will move on to board member comments. Do any of you have any comments that you would like to share?
Miss, Miss Gittens?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Okay, um, I know that we're short on time to get to the other meeting. So I just wanna say that, uh, not knowing how long we will be in the circumstances of doing remote meetings, um, I think we need to maybe talk about or talk with the, um, uh, tech, uh, folks about our kind of procedures and how we do this and, uh, so that we don't, um, have anyone that is, that is not participating. And, um, other than that, um, thank you. I will save the rest of my comments until later.
Thank you. And, um, I, I hope that everyone today has been participating. So, uh, I just wanna make sure that I'm not missing anyone. So if I have, I apologize for that. Uh, Ms. Jevanelli, please.
I'll be quick as well. I, I was gonna mention this and, and we can talk about it later. I've had a couple calls regarding, um, uh, the advanced programs. There was a, uh, you know, uh, enrollment due to COVID-19. A lot of people are, um, rethinking their, uh, their students, uh, whether they're going to school probably. And I'm talking like private schools going to public and now the opportunity, the door has closed for enrollment, uh, on, you know, for the ACE and, and IB and those kind of things. And, um, just put this in the back of your mind, I actually sent an email to Soretta and she, um, answered me saying, you know, it's a little more difficult because they're placing people. But I, I'm, I'm gonna, you know, advocate for, for parents that are maybe rethinking their student's, um, education, um, plan. And so, uh, I just wanna, you know, make everybody aware. And I'm not advocating one way or another to change the date or at this point in time, but I'm, uh, I like the word that, uh, Ms. Patrica mentioned a little bit ago, flexibility. And I know we had put, um, uh, you know, a timeline on, on, uh, enrollment and, and everything, but I think we need to rethink that with COVID-19 and be a little flexible. And maybe it could be, um, on an as-needed basis, if that's what the board desires. I just wanna bring it to the, uh, to everyone's attention that this could become an issue. And we, you know, we are not allowed, um, people to move and change things. And I haven't actually had a, a chance to even talk to Dr. Atkins about it 'cause it, it's only been in the last probably 48 hours that, um, I've had some calls about it. So I just thought I'd just put it out there real quick for you to think about it. And that's why it was sent in your Friday, um, 'cause I kind of did typical, I must have mentioned it a little bit or something to Dr. Atkins about it. 'Cause, oh, yes, I did. 'Cause I wasn't sure. Someone mentioned the August, uh, I mean, the July 31st date, um, for hardship waivers and the deadlines for that and so forth. So, um, I just wanted to, um, that's why that information was in on, is in the Friday's update. So, and that's why, just think about that. And if there's any, um, need for future discussion, we can talk about it another time. But that's, I just wanted to throw it out there. That's it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Jevanelli, for bringing that charge. Um, Ms. Morgan, please.
Yeah, I just, I wanna I wanna apologize to Dr. Atkins, Dr. Decimore, and Ms. Letcher for, uh, giving the impression that, that, uh, I, I didn't feel that staff was doing their job with respect to this whole budget situation. I know they're working incredibly hard to do the job. Uh, my concern is that we have a plan, once we have information, and that we, not staff, but we, take responsibility for leading the charge on this. So apologies to staff if it sounded like I, I, I didn't think you were, were getting it done. I know you're getting it done. The question is, what are we gonna do when you have numbers that we can work with? So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, uh, Ms. Vaughn, please.
Yeah, do you think I'm just gonna actually echo a couple things? Um, you make a great point about, um, the timing. And, you know, especially when we have another meeting coming up in a, in a few minutes. And you've done a great job keeping us on, on task. But in, in doing that, and you're doing the right thing, in, in doing that, I feel like there, some of the people that might have a frustration of, you know, wanting to express an opinion or have an extra question, something like that, like, oh, not enough time. And so, um, yeah, that's something we definitely, um, need to look at so we can all, including you and who's, whoever is directing the different meetings, um, can relax a little bit. And then the other thing, um, I want to echo something that Ms. Morgan said earlier. I asked Dr. Atkins to, um, share some of the, some of the numbers that they're working on. And as I said at that time, no, I'm not gonna be the one working on it. But I think perhaps we learned, um, an important lesson during the whole, um, planning stages of the, um, the schedule changes for high school. And that, um, if, as board members, if all of us as board members, um, have briefings, um, along the way and, you know, know some of the, know some of the numbers, um, it, it is our responsibility. That's, um, one of our biggest responsibilities as, as board members. And I surely do not wanna be put in the spot where down the road, um, several weeks or a couple months, somebody says to me, well, what is the district doing to cut these? And I say, um, I don't know. We, so, so anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that, um, as staff works on these numbers, and I know they're working on them right now, that in bits and pieces, it does get shared with us for that reason. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn for sharing. And Ms. Jevanelli, I see your hand up again. Is that true or false?
True. Just real, just real, real quick, back to what, um, Ms. Morgan just mentioned and actually what, um, Ms. Gittens mentioned, uh, we do need to workshop once the staff has, has more, um, information and maybe, you know, workshop the budget and, and versus having a briefing on it. So, so I think that, but I think we're all saying that, not really saying it. So, um, so I, I agree. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And I, I agree with you as well. We'll work on something for that. Okay, so, um, I appreciate all of you today with your patience. And if the, um, Ms. Bruno, do you have any comments?
Um, very quickly, I just want the public to know that throughout this entire meeting, the chat feature was turned off, so that everybody knows the chat feature was turned off.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you so much. And then superintendent, Mr. Atkins?
Uh, did lack of time, I'll, uh, I'll wait till the next one.
Okay, thank you. Well, seeing that we have gone through all of this, uh, oh, I'm sorry, is there any good of the order? Seeing none, uh, meeting is adjourned. And thank you so much. On to the next one.
Please use the link for the 3 o'clock, please.
Yeah, okay. Can we, can we have five minutes?
No, it'll take five minutes to just turn this thing down and get to the next one, I think.
I might understand we're on the same link.
No, we gotta, no, we have to start again.
Let's go to a different one?
Yeah, leave and, and rejoin the, the 1 o'clock meeting, she said. He said.
The 3 o'clock, you mean?